Keep waiting for someone to point, that means they start.
Oh, you did.
Oh, you did, he did.
He did, yeah.
All right, well, thanks for pointing. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the 2024 Annual General and Special Meeting of Coast Capital Savings Federal Credit Union. I'm Bob Armstrong, I'm Chair of the Board of Directors, and I will act as Chair of today's meeting. Our Annual General and Special Meeting is a hybrid event this year. We are here live in person at the Civic Hotel in Surrey, and we're also streaming online to our membership wherever they may be. Now, see, that's the first time we've done that, so that's quite exciting. Before we start, I'd like to acknowledge that we live and work on the traditional and ancestral homelands of Indigenous people and nations across Canada, each with their own unique traditions, history, and culture. Our headquarters and the hotel that we are in today stand on the traditional territory of the Semiamu, the Tawasun, Quantlin, Katzie, Kikwetlam, and the Kikite First Nations. This meeting is also being held online, and we have staff and members joining from different locations, and as such, I invite you to consider whose territory you live and work on. The website native-land.ca is a great resource to let you explore Indigenous territories, treaties, and languages. Coordinating a meeting like this is a complex project. I'd like to offer a big thank you to the small but amazing team of staff and tech experts who've worked very hard to put all this together and who are providing support behind the scenes. However, if and perhaps when things go sideways at some point with the technology, we will appreciate your patience and understanding. If you were here in person, you would have received the meeting materials for today's meeting when you registered in person, and for those of you in the room, members will have a yellow information package, and our guests have a white package. For those of you joining online, these same meeting materials are available on Coast Capital's website, at coastcapital savings dot com slash AGM, and on the webcast site in the Documents tab, which is at the top of your screen. If you have not done so already, please review these documents, as I will make reference to them for various matters throughout the meeting. In a few moments, I'll inform you about how you can vote on the procedural matters and how you can ask questions during and after the meeting. But now, it is time to start the meeting. So, dear members and guests, the 2024 Annual General and Special Meeting of Coast Capital Savings Federal Credit Union is called to order. Our Coast Capital Credit Union rules require that all members receive written notice of our Annual General and Special Meeting. Notice was provided in the 2024 Board of Directors' Election and Annual General Meeting and Special Meeting Materials, which were mailed to members in mid-March. Coast Capital's rules require that a minimum of 50 members in good standing constitute a quorum at a general meeting. And based on the in-person attendance, excuse me, in-person and online registration for this meeting, I announce that we are in compliance with our minimum quorum requirement. Thank you all very much for coming. Dear members and guests, this Annual General and Special Meeting is duly constituted for the transaction of business. I will start with a short round of introductions. To my right is Calvin McInnes. Calvin is our President and Chief Executive Officer. To his right is Director Chris Trumpey, and Chris is the Chair of our Governance and Nominating Committee. And to my left is Lisa Skakin, and I have to read this. She's our Chief Legal, Regulatory, and Corporate Affairs Officer, and also the Parliamentarian for today's meeting. We also have members of our Executive and Senior Leadership Team on site in case any detailed questions arise. And I would also like to welcome representatives of the TSX Trust who are here. TSX Trust is acting as our Tabulator, Scrutineer, and Returning Officer, and they are overseeing this year's election and ballot accounting processes. Our auditors from KPMG LLP are also here, should we require them. Welcome to everyone. For today's meeting, we have established the Standing Rules, which set out how you may participate in the meeting. For those of you who have joined us in person, the Standing Rules are outlined in your meeting information package, and for those of you joining online, you can find a copy of the meeting materials which are posted on the website, coastcapital savings dot com slash AGM. They're also included in today's webcast in the Documents tab on the top of your screen. But I would like to just quickly review the key points to save you having to read all that. Today's Annual General and Special Meeting and Members' Open Forum are being held to deal with the general business of Coast Capital Savings Federal Credit Union. For transparency, the names of members who speak and ask questions will be shared during the meeting. However, as we are committed to security and confidentiality and the privacy of personal information of our members, we ask that if you would like to discuss any issues of a personal nature, please bring them forward separately from the meeting, so that your personal information is not inadvertently shared with the audience. We do have members of Coast Capital's Executive and several of our directors here today, and we would all be happy to chat with you following the meeting. To protect the integrity of this meeting, only members of Coast Capital who have been verified in person or online will be invited to vote on motions or ask questions during the Annual General and Special Meeting and after the meeting in the Members' Open Forum. Advance voting on the Director Election and the Appointment of Auditor and on the Ordinary and Special Resolutions was completed by April 18, 2024. Voting on these matters reopened today at 4:00 and will close at 4:45, and we will confirm the results of those votes later in today's meeting. No members submitted additional resolutions for consideration at the meeting, therefore the only motions that will be coming forward today are procedural, such as approving the agenda. We encourage your participation in the meeting. When the time comes for questions, we invite in-person attendees to approach the microphones here in the room, there's two of them, to approach those microphones and then wait for me to recognize you. For those online, if you would like to comment on a motion after it's been proposed and seconded, you may enter a question or a comment in the Messaging tab, which you'll find at the top of your screen. After I call for a vote on a motion, those of you in person, I will ask for a show of hands, and you'll just raise your yellow card. And that way we'll know that you're a member who's voting. For those online, the Voting tab will appear on your screen, and the voting choices will be displayed, and you can select yes or no, and after you vote, a message saying "Vote Received" will appear to confirm your vote. Your vote can be changed by clicking the other option until we lock down the voting. If you want to cancel your vote, you can just press Cancel. Anything you type in the Message tab or select in the Voting tab will be visible only to those of us who are coordinating the meeting. This is to preserve confidentiality and to make sure your comments and votes will not be visible to the general audience. However, if we end up sharing one of your comments or reading out one of your questions, at that time I will identify you by name to make sure we have full transparency. In all comments, members are asked to observe decorum and to avoid disorderly or discourteous behavior or personal attacks. Discussion must be relevant to the agenda item. If you have questions that do not pertain to the business being discussed, we can take those up during the Members' Open Forum following the formal part of the meeting. Any other matters relating to the conduct of the meeting will be resolved by me as Chair of the meeting. Phew, that's a lot of rules. I would now like, this is where we practice voting, I'd like a motion, please, to approve the Standing Rules as provided in the Annual General and Special Meeting Information Package. May I have a mover? Sue, thank you. And a seconder, thank you Nancy. I will now call for discussion on the motion. Are there any questions or comments on this motion? Typically not. Not a big exciting motion. Seeing none, we'll move on to the question. So, we're now to go for the voting. So, this is where we practice, this is to get the easy one out of the way. For those joining online, you will now see the Voting tab on the top of your screen. So, you can let us know what your position is on this motion by selecting yes to vote in favor or no if you're against it. And now, for the sea of yellow in the room, for those in the room, please raise your yellow card if you're in favor. That's a lot. Any opposed? None opposed, I have one opposed, no, I have a, no, I think it was a late wave. Anybody opposed to the motion? Nope. And online, do I have good count online? Looking at my friends at the special counting table. They're looking at each other. Yes, the motion carries, thank you. Now, let's please refer to the Annual General and Special Meeting Agenda, which is on the next slide. Yep, there it is, perfect. We're now going to review that quickly and then vote on it. So, the order of events, after last year's minutes have been adopted, I will present the Board of Directors' Report. This will be followed by a report from Calvin, our President and CEO. We will then receive the 2023 Auditor's Report and the 2023 Audited Financial Statements, followed by confirmation of the vote results on the Appointment of External Auditors for 2024. I will then share with you the report on the results of the vote on the Ordinary and Special Resolutions. Following this, Chris Trumpey, Chair of our Governance and Nominating Committee, will report on the Director Nominations and Recruiting Process and the Results of the Director Election. And then, under Item 13, members will have the opportunity to ask questions about all of those reports, the Board of Directors, CEO, Auditors, and Elections. So, we're going to go run through all the reports, and then we'll break for questions on those reports. Closing remarks will follow, and then we will finish off the formal part of the meeting, and we'll move into the Members' Open Forum. So, may I please have a motion to approve today's agenda? Thank you, Ravi, seconded by Lois. I wanted to say Gwen so badly, it's Lois. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, so now we'll go to the question, which means the vote is online, you can click yes or no, and in the room, all in favor of the agenda, the yellow cards go flying up, thank you, cards go down, anybody opposed? I'm assuming I probably have enough people in the room to know that carried. The motion is carried, thank you. Okay, next we look at the minutes of last year's meeting. The minutes of the 2023 Annual General Meeting were included in your information package, and they were also made available on our website at coastcapital savings dot com slash AGM. They can also be found in the webcast in the Documents tab at top of your screen. The minutes are now presented for you for your information and to confirm that there are no errors or omissions. May I please have a motion to adopt the minutes of last year's meeting? Thank you, I have one yellow card there, and the seconder, please. Thank you, Jeremy. May I have a call for any discussion on the minutes? Again, it would be unusual at this time, but wouldn't that be fun if somebody had a question about the minutes, if they keep us off at our toes? Now, we'll go to the question then, so time for voting online once again, you can click yes or no, and in the room, all in favor? And opposed? The motion carries, thank you very much. We will now move to Item 7 on the Agenda, which is the Board of Directors' Report. So, I'd like to begin by acknowledging my fellow directors in attendance, either in person or online, and joining us online for this year's Annual General and Special Meeting, Charlotte Burke, Jerome Dwight, Farid Jaffer, Valerie Lambert, and Firdo Samji, and then in the room here today, Sue Duchovick, Nancy McKenzie, Lois Neherny, Chris Trumpey, and Calvin McInnes, and myself. So, I'd like to thank each of our directors for their commitment and their leadership over the past year. It's a very talented and dedicated group, and we're very lucky to have their leadership and our contributions. They've really helped Coast Capital stay focused on our members and on our purpose of building better futures together. Over the past 12 months, since our last Annual General Meeting, economic circumstances have proven challenging for many across Canada. As a purpose-driven organization, Coast Capital was well-positioned and able to help individuals, families, businesses, and communities manage their financial situations. The Board has worked hard to support Coast Capital's strategy to provide meaningful financial services to our members while also supporting our employees and the greater community. During this past year, Coast Capital has remained steadfast and focused on delivering trusted financial advice, helpful products and services for our individuals and for our business members. With strong governance, Coast Capital was able to grow responsibly while delivering value to members and embedding purpose into the work that drives everything that we do. Our purpose of building better futures together includes supporting our communities. We encourage Coast Capital employees to demonstrate their commitment to initiatives and causes that they support through volunteering. Last year, 57% of Coast Capital employees volunteered for a total of over 15,000 hours of community time in the initiatives that they are passionate about. We also reinvested $6.2 million into community and nonprofit organizations and programs via donations, partnerships, and other charitable giving. One of the most notable contributions we made was a commitment to invest $1 million over five years to support skilled trades apprentices on their pathway to trade qualifications and a Red Seal endorsement. Through this community investment, Coast Capital is helping to address the chronic shortage of skilled trades across British Columbia by funding the Coast Capital Road to Red Seal, an educational support program that removes barriers faced by many trade students. And even though you enjoy listening to me, we'll now take a break and watch a short video on this program.
I really didn't have a trades background. I started out working as a carpenter's helper, just had a rugby tournament, and I took a knee to the head and had concussion symptoms for about a year, and turns out, they found a brain tumor. From there, it was about nine months before I could walk again. My whole carpentry career was adjusted based on this whole surgery, and that's when I decided to get my apprenticeship. I was always more hands-on, and that's kind of why I got into the trades, and then I had to go back and do testing, which was never my strong suit. Doing the courses, it was a struggle, I failed the Red Seal exam twice, didn't think I was going to finish it.
When we learned that less than half of those who initiate Red Seal Trades Certification are actually making it through to completion, it was clear that there was some serious underlying issues that were getting in the way. And those could be anything from someone's personal circumstances, their economic situation, could be a language issue, an undiagnosed learning disability, or some other essential skills gap. These are things that can be supported so that you can overcome those barriers and get to that finish line, and that's what this program does.
The Coast Capital Road to Red Seal Program was developed to help apprentices reach their goals and achieve certification. It's really a customized, one-on-one approach to helping individuals succeed.
You know, it really takes a full community, I think, for apprentices to be successful, and at Skilled Trades BC, we really believe our role is to advance the skilled trades training system. Having that Red Seal qualification or that full designation that can really lead to fantastic careers, whether it be on the tools or perhaps as a small business owner later in life. We know there's going to be 85,000 jobs coming out in the skilled trades in the next 10 years. Skilled trades are for everyone, and so we want more women to consider skilled trades, we want more Indigenous people to consider skilled trades, and we really want British Colombians to know how great these careers are, how many opportunities there are, to upscale, to take refreshers, to support each individual in their learning journey, because we want to make sure people are successful, to get them into those jobs, but then to make them successful as apprentices, into journey people, and then to train our next apprentices for British Columbia.
Over the years, you know, you work with so many people, and everybody has a different story. With Tanner, it was about identifying what those gaps were, but also, we were able to walk beside him, so that when he got to the exam, he nailed it.
Michelle helped me get enrolled into a program to refresh everything and went over different ways to study and what I needed to focus on. If Michelle wasn't there to help me through it, I don't think I would be a Red Seal carpenter to this day. I remember it clearly because I got called saying I passed a test. It took three times, but it was well worth it in the long run. Getting my Red Seal, income-wise, it definitely helped quite a bit, it definitely pushed my career in upward trajectory, and now I'm a general foreman for a decent-sized company and running all the special projects. To bring in the extra income, it means the world because my wife is able to stay home and watch our son. Every day I get home and he throws on his high-vis vest and says, "I'm a worker man", and he wants to come to work with me and play with the machines. To see his face light up like that, it makes everything else worth it. Being in the trades and being able to support my family that way is huge.
I was lucky enough to be at BCT when we kicked off that program, maybe showed that video and a few others, and I met Tanner, because he was there, huge guy, very intimidatingly impressive, but so shy. So, he did not like seeing that video, he was hiding under his chair, all kinds of applause, he had a standing ovation at the end, he couldn't, he's too small to get under the table, but he was trying desperately. But it was really, it was pretty impactful to see his reaction and to see the reaction of the people in the room to his reaction. It's really powerful, it's an extremely powerful program, having a huge impact or potential impact on so many lives, so proud to be part of the team on that one. The Coast Capital Road to Red Seal is just one of hundreds of programs and organizations that we've supported over the years, and in 2023, our community investments reached a significant milestone. Since 2000, we have now invested more than $100 million into the communities that we support. This is just one of many ways we've been building better futures for our communities, and we're just getting started. Coast Capital is also deeply committed to being a diverse and inclusive place to work. Coast Capital is a signatory to the 50-30 Challenge, which is an initiative, and, that's hard, an initiative of the Government of Canada to increase the representation of women and other equity-deserving groups on corporate boards and senior management. We've advanced this commitment in 2023 through a board diversity policy that outlines our approach to diversity for our board to advance equity, diversity, and inclusion at the most senior levels of our organization. And I can report that 50% of our independent directors are women, and 40% of our independent directors represent other equity-deserving groups. And Coast Capital's Executive Committee and Senior Leadership Team, that make up our senior management group, are comprised of 32.5% women and/or non-binary people, and 50% represent other equity-deserving groups. I look forward to working with my colleagues to continue making impact in this area in the years ahead. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank Calvin, our Executive Committee, and all Coast Capital employees for their ongoing dedication to helping our individual members, business members, and our communities over the past year. Thank you also to our close to 600,000 members for your ongoing support and your continued trust in partnering with Coast Capital. And before I hand the floor to Calvin, I'd like to share that following today's meeting, Director Chris Trumpey, the far-right, and Farid Jaffer, not in the room right now, don't think, will be concluding their time on our board. Chris is concluding the maximum term of service of 12 years after first being elected to the Board in 2012. Chris's contributions during his tenure have been significant, including serving on all Board Committees, and most recently and currently, until about four hours from now or four minutes from now, chairing the Governance and Nominations Committee. Farid is concluding a three-year term after first being elected to the Coast Board in 2021. Farid's contributions during his time on the Board included being a member of the Human Resources Committee, the Risk Review Committee, and the Audit and Finance Committee. Chris and Farid, it's been a pleasure working with both of you, and it's been a wonderful opportunity for me personally, for our other directors, and for Coast. On behalf of your colleagues on the Board, I thank you for your many contributions to Coast Capital. Chris is very humble, he's not going to, he's not going to bring a smile. Applause. And I will now pass the microphone to Calvin McInnes, our President and Chief Executive Officer.
Great, thank you, Bob, and good afternoon to everyone here in the West, and good evening to many who are joining us out on the East Coast as well. And for those joining us in person, it's so great to be back, thank you, I really, really appreciate that. So, I want to start by expressing my appreciation to my Executive Committee and our Board of Directors, of course, for their leadership and continued commitment to helping our members achieve their financial goals in 2023. As Bob mentioned, the past 12 months have been a challenging time. Many people and businesses are struggling with inflation rates, record debt levels, income instability, making it that much harder to make ends meet or even get ahead. And throughout this past year, I was often reminded of our purpose, and this video is a great reminder as well, but it's really about building better futures together and how it matters more than ever. At Coast Capital, we're uniquely positioned to help through our focus on making a positive impact in our members' lives today and tomorrow. We envision a future where people and businesses have financial opportunities and can thrive. We're aligning Coast Capital to drive towards this outcome. Throughout 2023, we worked hard to deliver value to our members, and our financial performance continues to show long-term resilience and consistency. We've maintained the strength of our balance sheet and capital and liquidity positions despite the challenging conditions, and our total assets under administration are $27 billion, and our net income was $58.5 million at year-end. We also issued a new subordinate debt instrument in the Canadian capital markets to further strengthen our capital position, which marks a significant innovation in capital raising for a federal credit union. Coast Capital's financial strength and resilience were further corroborated when we maintained our long-term and short-term credit ratings, and I better read this, of BBB high and R1 low from the Global Credit Agency, DBRS Morningstar. I'm also proud to share, we were once again recognized as one of Deloitte's Canada's best managed companies, making the 21st year Coast Capital has made the list and our 14th year as a member of the award program's Platinum Club. Most importantly, we continue to put our members at the center of everything we do. We know more of our members are turning to digital services for their banking needs. Last year, we added new digital products and services to our Coast mobile banking app and Coast online banking to make it simple for members to open new accounts, access financial products, and book appointments online. We introduced MasterCard, issued by our partners at Calabria. This new suite of credit cards offers enhanced benefits and improved digital services, making it easier and more convenient for members to manage their credit cards. We also know many of our members are saving for their first home, and we helped them move that much closer to reaching their goals by launching our first home savings account last year. And to support our commercial members and those with more complex investment needs, we enhanced our wealth management team, which resulted in more members receiving advice and guidance from a dedicated financial advisor to help them achieve their financial goals. And understanding that many members need help with debt consolidation and borrowing, we introduced an unsecured, pre-approved loan campaign in 2023. This campaign focused on helping members reduce their monthly borrowing costs by consolidating external debt into fixed-term loans. We also began a proactive campaign of contacting members with variable-rate mortgages who would be impacted by rising interest rates to offer advice and to help them manage their monthly payments. And last year, we provided a limited-time offer to new members whereby they could earn 20% cash back on their household bills when they were debited from new Coast Capital checking accounts. We also provided $150 donation to the Youth Futures Education Fund for every new member who joined Coast Capital. And as I mentioned, you know, our members are at the center of everything we do. Information we received in an omnibus study that we commissioned revealed that 72% of Canadians don't believe that better budgeting or increased savings alone would improve their situation. This study also revealed that 48% believe that obtaining education or skills training would help them increase their income. With this information earlier this year, Coast Capital launched our new Elevate and Unlimited Checking Accounts. Both of these new accounts provide free unlimited interact e-transfers and identify theft monitoring, while continuing to include the features most popular with members like unlimited day-to-day banking transactions. Our new Elevate Checking Account is the first of its kind and comes with a special add-on to help our members have the opportunity to earn more through access to education and skills training. And through our partnership with Coursera, we are providing our members who have the Elevate Checking Account with free access to online global learning platform that has more than 11,000 world-class courses, I've done a number of them myself, they're excellent, and job-ready professional certificates across sectors and industries from the world's top universities and companies. As we're building better futures for our community and members, we're also delivering upon our promise of making sure employees feel connected and part of our purpose and culture by empowering them to work with their most effective, to work where they're most effective while meeting the priorities of members and our org. work where they're most effective while meeting the priorities of members and our organization. So Coast Capital provides employees with a broad range of benefits and resources as well as flexible work options to support work-life balance. These include a living wage, inclusive workplace, a robust volunteer program, career and leadership development, comprehensive recognition and awards programs, and a well-being program to support physical and mental wellness. And in 2023, we also provided employees with financial well-being bonus to further support them through these challenging economic times and help relieve some of the financial pressures that we're all feeling these days. And as we move through the current economic environment, we remain committed to bringing our purpose to life through all that we do. This includes the advice and products we offer our members, the investments we contribute to our communities that we live and serve in, and the efforts we make to support employees so they can grow their careers and incomes too. And I'm grateful to our employees who bring incredible ideas, innovations, and energy to the work we do. I'm also grateful to our board of directors, executive committee, and our senior leadership team who put our members at the center of every discussion and every decision. I also want to extend my appreciation and thanks to Helen Blackburn, Coast Capital's Chief Financial Officer. I think this is the first time I've actually said this so loud, so if I get emotional, I'm sorry, but who's retiring at the end of 2024. Helen has played a key role on the executive team of Coast since March of 2016. With her financial acumen and leadership, she's built a strong foundation and an exceptional team that continues to reinforce Coast Capital's financial health. So congratulations, Helen, on your retirement. We really are deeply grateful for your leadership throughout the years and unwavering commitment to excellence. I'd also like to thank members who choose to partner with us every day. Thank you for placing your trust in Coast. We've accomplished a lot over these last 12 months and we're excited for what we'll accomplish in the year ahead. So back to you, Bob.
Thanks, Calvin. Do we have the voting results?
We do. Oh, I was wondering, there's paper hitting me.
It's all kinds, I know. It's very cool.
I thought there was a fly.
Well, and before I carry on, Calvin bragged that he took some Coursera courses, so I'm gonna brag as well. So I highly recommend it. It's a spectacular service. I've done several artificial intelligence programs. It hasn't helped yet. Apparently you have to take a lot of them. But the coolest one I did, I did an introduction to philosophy course put on by the University of Edinburgh, which is why I'm so fun to sit with at dinnertime these days. All right, thanks, Calvin, for that. Hey, next on the agenda are the receipt of our financial statements, the appointment of our auditor, the voting results of the ordinary and special resolutions, and the results of our director election. We'll go through all of these matters and then we'll take questions on them. So you're being, those with questions, you're being patient. So if you have a question about the financial statements and you notice that I don't stop to ask for questions while we're talking about the financial statements, don't worry, we will entertain questions on those as a group after I get rid of the procedural items. So let's start with the financial statements and the auditor's report. Coast Capital's 2023 annual report contains our 2023 financial statements and the auditor's report, all of which have been posted on the website for this meeting. KPMG has provided their opinion on page 62 of the annual report document. Their report states that, in their opinion, the accompanying consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects the consolidated balance sheet of the credit union as at December 31, 2023, and its consolidated financial performance and its consolidated cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with IFRS accounting standards as issued by the International Accounting Standards Board, which is called a clean audit opinion. You'll also find a detailed management discussion and analysis of the 2023 financials in the annual report, starting, which provides a comprehensive review of financials. As required by legislation, the board has approved the financial statements on your behalf, so I declare the auditor's report and the financial statements as received. I'd now like to move on to the next item on the agenda and share with you the results of the ordinary and special resolutions that we asked members to vote on this year. As mentioned earlier, advanced voting was completed April 18, and then voting on these matters reopened at 4 o'clock today and closed shortly ago at 4:45. And the TSX Trust has now tallied those votes and added them to the advanced voting results, so I can now share them with you. So first, the ordinary resolution regarding the appointment of auditors. Your board recommended that the firm of KPMG LLP be appointed auditors for the year 2024. I'm happy to announce the appointment of KPMG LLP as auditor of Coast Capital Savings Federal Credit Union until the close of the next annual general meeting. With 94.77% of the votes in favor, I declare KPMG as auditors for 2024, and I confirm that pursuant to Rule 17.2, the auditor's remuneration is set by the board of directors. I would now like to share the results of the ordinary resolution and the special resolution that we asked members to vote on this year. The ordinary resolution, we asked members to approve the introduction of a vice chair retainer in the amount of $10,000. An ordinary resolution requires greater than 50% approval by the members voting to pass. In accordance with our member-approved guiding principles on board remuneration, we review our board compensation every two years, and this was done in 2023 by engaging a leading advisory firm to conduct an independent review. Their report concluded that our current levels of director remuneration are appropriate and that they remain consistent with our guiding principles. The Governance and Nominations Committee identified an opportunity to better align to the guiding principles by introducing one change, which was a vice chair retainer, given that this role has increased responsibility similar to committee chairs. So I'll now present the results of the ordinary resolution and with 63.31% of those members voting, of those members voting in favor, our members have passed the ordinary resolution. This year, we also asked members to vote on a special resolution to change Coast Capital Savings Federal Credit Union Rule 15.3. A special resolution requires two-thirds support by members to vote, members voting to pass. The proposed change to the rule is to increase the aggregate cap on director remuneration. The cap is a requirement of our governing legislation. It's important to note that the cap is the maximum remuneration that may be paid in a financial year and that the proposed resolution did not change the rates of director remuneration that members have previously approved. The board proposed the change considering potential demands for additional workload for directors and increased meetings due to special projects and initiatives, regulatory matters, and also ensuring that directors are fully paid at the member-approved rates, recognizing the contributions of their skills, their knowledge, and time. I'll now present the results of the special resolution vote, and with 57.33% of those members voting against, our members have rejected the special resolution. So this means that the board's remuneration will continue to have an aggregate cap of $825,000. And while the board was recommending this increase in remuneration cap, it is entirely within our members' rights to turn down such a recommendation, which you have done. In retrospect, I'm not surprised by the result because of the way that we presented the information to our members. Anyone reading the ballot question would have likely assumed that we were recommending a doubling of board compensation. Those who took the time to read the supporting materials would have seen that we were not recommending any changes to retainers or meeting fees or any other aspect to board compensation, but we should not have made it this hard to find the information. We were recommending an increase in the total compensation cap to ensure that the member-approved director compensation could continue to be paid in the event that extra meetings were necessary in a given year, but we'll find a way to work within the cap this year. But I suspect you'll see a similar question next year, albeit presented in a way that explains the situation more properly. This was our mistake. We will do it better next time. But thank you to our members for taking the time to vote on these resolutions. I would now like to ask Chris Trumpy, the Chair of our Governance and Nominations Committee, to provide you with a report of the Governance and Nominations Committee's work on our election of directors. Chris?
Thank you, Bob. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm pleased to be here to share the report of the Governance Nominations Committee on the election of Coast Capital Directors for 2024. As a federal financial cooperative, we seek directors with a diversity of skills and experience to oversee the affairs and performance of Coast Capital, which operates in a complex and rapidly changing financial services industry. The decisions made by the board directly impact our members and help ensure we remain strong, relevant, and equipped to support their evolving financial needs. It's the role of the Governance Nominations Committee to identify and recommend individuals with a diversity of backgrounds, experiences, and perspectives who would add strength to Coast Capital's board while embracing and promoting a culture of ethical behavior. A key part of this process is to identify the specific skills and attributes most needed on the board to serve our members' interests in the coming term. We do this by looking at the board's existing skills, where there are any retiring directors, and what we may lose as a result of their departure. We also look at what's happening within the organization, industry, and regulatory environment, and where we may need additional expertise. Last fall, we notified members about the specific skills sought for 2024. We also invited interested members to request a more comprehensive package of what we're looking for in prospective board candidates. At the same time, with the help of an independent governance consultant, the Governance Nominations Committee sought out qualifying candidates in the broader community who match this description. For 2024, we were looking for director candidates with skills and experience in four specific areas: credit risk, regulatory compliance, small business, and risk management. On behalf of the Governance and Nominations Committee, I want to thank all of the members who expressed interest in contributing to the success of Coast Capital and considered running for the available positions on our board. Oh, I have to put my glasses on. This year, six candidates stood for election for four available positions. A diverse group of individuals chose to run, including new candidates, Gigi Genko, Andrew Petter, and George Turner, returning candidate Jennifer Eldricken, and incumbent directors, Sue Demovic, I don't know if I got that right or not, and Nancy McKenzie. At the close of the election on April 18, and as at today's annual general and special meeting, with electronic and mail votes calculated, we received a total of, and the number I have down here is wrong, so I'm not gonna read it, I'm gonna say in excess of 7,000 ballots. I could tell that because I know that was the number as of last Friday. And we did have 25 additional ballots cast today. So based on these results, I declare with 4,851 votes, Gigi Genko, 5,403 votes, Sue Demovic, 6,107 votes, Nancy McKenzie, and 5,854 votes, Andrew Petter, to be elected to the board of directors following the conclusion of this evening's annual and general meeting. Congratulations on your election to the Coast Capital Board of Directors. In addition, I'd like to extend my thanks to fellow Governance and Nominations Committee members, Charlotte Burke, Valerie Lampert, and Bob Armstrong, who supported this year's recruitment and election process. I'd also like to thank all the members who took the time to participate in this year's election process and cast votes. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. Okay, now you have received several reports this evening. The report of the board, that's what I read, the report of president and CEO from Calvin, the auditor's report along with the financial statements, the results of the ordinary and special resolutions, and also Chris's report from the Governance and Nominations Committee. So we will now welcome questions on all of these reports at this time. So I'll remind you, if you have questions outside of these reports that are of a general interest to members, hold those until we get to the members' open forum. So we'll focus on the reports now. Other types of questions we'll deal with after we finish the formal part of the meeting. And then if you have questions about the reports that were submitted and you're here in person, I'd encourage you, please, to come to one of the two microphones and I'll be keeping an eye on those. Bring your yellow card with you, please, and then just wait for me to recognize you and then we can have the question. If you're online, you can submit your questions through the message tab found at the top of your screen. The team here will then provide them to me to read, and I'll read them out loud, and then we'll respond to the questions. I'll, or I will, or I'll get a colleague to. So now we move to questions. Does anybody have any questions on any of the reports? Do we have the theme song from Jeopardy that we could perhaps play at this time?
Nothing online either.
Nothing coming online? That's not, that's not a problem. I will recall from history that the most interesting questions tend to be in the members' open forum. I'm gonna buy a little bit of time for the online people by telling my embarrassing ATM story. It seems like a reasonable thing to do. A couple weeks ago, I was at the Ocean Park branch and I was at the ATM. I was actually depositing a check from some other financial institution for $1.24. So stupidest thing, they should have just like, not even sent it, but they did. And for some reason, I was near the ATM, so I just deposited it through the ATM. Really, I do it my phone, it's easy. For some reason, I thought ATM, it's right there, why not? As I'm at the ATM poking away at it, my friend Al walks over and starts talking to me. And so I get, now I'm distracted. So now I'm trying, and I'm not very good at two things at once. So I'm playing here and I'm talking to Al, and I'm playing and I'm talking and I get my receipt and then, okay, thanks, Al. And then I get in my car and drive away and I've left my card in the ATM. Like that's, I'm the Chair of the credit union. I'm supposed to not do that. So, oh, so I spin around, come back in, I go into the branch, and there's Brittany. If you're listening, Brittany, thank you for saving my life. Brittany, who works on our Ocean Park branch. And I say, Brittany, I'm so, please don't tell anybody, but I, and whether she's allowed to or not, I don't know. She might have been doing me a favor, but she unlocked the back of the ATM, went in, and mine was not the only card in there. She pulled out a small stack, get some nods, and she looked through them, she said, well, this one has your name on it, so I guess it's yours. So I thought that was good customer service right there. That was member appreciation. And also, it just shows how easy it is to forget your card in an ATM. Yeah, so it's not that, you know, thank you very much. Okay, so I tried to buy time, didn't get any questions. Okay, so we'll now call it an end of the question period before I embarrass myself further. So I'll take this opportunity then to thank everyone who's worked hard to make this hybrid annual general meeting and special meeting a reality. You've just done an amazing job. It's actually, we haven't, if there's been a problem, I haven't noticed it. A big thank you as well to my board colleagues, to our president and CEO, Calvin and his team, and all of Coast Capital's employees, many of whom are here today. Thanks for coming out. And to you, our members who are here in person and online, thank you for entrusting us with your financial well-being. Thanks also to our guests that are here this morning or this evening. And we're now at the conclusion of the formal part of the meeting, so we'll follow this up with the members' open forum, which everyone is welcome to stay for. So I would now like to have our final motion of the day, a motion to conclude the formal portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to conclude? Thank you, Sue, seconded by Wayne. Is there any discussion? No, all in favor of concluding? Very popular motion. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are now through the formal part, and we will now move to the members' open forum. The, and just to, oh, I got excited. A question has already come in. This is a good sign. So to confirm, the standing rules that we approved earlier in the meeting are still relevant. I'm just gonna hit on a couple of the highlights here. We're still talking about the general business of Coast Capital Savings Federal Credit Union. So if you have questions beyond that, we're not going to deal with them now, and especially if they get into something about your own personal financial situation, really, we want to make sure we don't expose anybody's personal information, so we won't deal with that. I'll take those offline, because we're committed to security and confidentiality. We do have Coast Capital executives and directors here in person who can be happy to chat with you about those issues while you're here. Alternatively, you may wish to speak to our staff at our branches, Brittany, for example, or the Advice Center. Only verified personnel, personal members of Coast Capital will be invited to ask questions. That's the yellow card, folks. And on each matter, we would ask that each member just comment up to two times, just so we have plenty of opportunity for all to, all to contribute. In all comments, members are asked to observe decorum to avoid disorderly or discourteous behavior or personal attacks. And to allow sufficient time for everyone to have their questions addressed, I'll ask that you pose only two questions until we have a chance to get through everybody, and then you can come back and ask some more. If I determine that a question or something is not consistent with the standing rules, then I'll make that decision at the time. I will also try to rotate between questions in the room and online if there's a combination of the two. Chris and Calvin and Lisa and I will do our best to answer the questions. So members that are here in person, if you have questions, please come forward to one of the microphones, bring your yellow card, and I'll call on you. And if you're online, please submit your questions through the message tab, which is located at the top of your screen. You can find a little speech balloon icon. Open the tab, type your question, and then send it in. The team here, crack team over to my right, is bringing all those in, and then they're feeding them up here to us on our screens. Please note that this is a public meeting of the membership, so we will be sharing your name. If you raise a question, I'll ask you who you are, and if you're online, I'll read your name out, so that everybody knows who's talking and who's not. So with that, I will now invite people to come forward with questions. And while you're doing that, I'll just take a look online here. That's a good one. So this is from, sorry, of course, they're good questions. It's not tough to me to decide. This question comes from Carissa Friesen. Calvin, have you read this one? Because I'm gonna be handing it over to you shortly.
I have read it.
I will read the-
And I could tell by your laughter, it was coming to me, so I was like...
No, it's a, it's a good one. It's a bit of a technical one, but fun to get into. So with my regular high, so she says my, but I know that she's talking here on behalf of all members. "With my regular high-interest savings account, where does that interest income come from? I understand that it's a liquid account, but does Coast Capital trade with the money that's in there? What does Coast Capital do with money that is in liquid accounts? I've heard rumors that if everyone wanted to cash or transfer out their savings accounts all at once, they would not be able to. I realize that's an extreme example, but an answer to it would help me understand what's going on with my money when I make a deposit into a liquid account." It's an excellent question. Calvin?
All right. Well, yeah, Carissa, great question, wherever you're writing us to from. So yeah, really good question. So essentially, I'm gonna simplify it a little bit by saying any money that gets deposited with us is essentially, you know, money that we, in one form- deposited with us is essentially, you know, money that we—in one form of another, where whether it's high interest or a term deposit, we pay you a rate of interest to essentially kind of borrow that money from you, to hold that money. We then deploy that money by ideally and mostly using it to lending it out to other members. And so that's sort of the very simplified flow. As far as, you know, you're concerned about potentially trading, we are an OSFI-regulated entity, so that's the Office of the Superintendent of Financial Institutions, and the Bank Act, which is about the ethic kind of our Bible, dictates what we can and cannot do, and it's very conservative, and most if any of the investments that are made have to be in highly liquid assets and instruments. So it's quite a conservative way in which we deploy any of the funds, however they get deposited into Coast. And so that's sort of very oversimplified, but I'd be happy to get into it more with you, Carissa, if you want to dive deeper, but I hope that satisfies or answers your question.
Thanks, Calvin. Super. Do you want to answer this one?
Sure.
We have a question in from—I was just checking with my friend to see if she wants to take this one, because I don't have the answer. This is coming in from Martin Duhamel, and Martin asks, "Can you please tell us how many registered voting—excuse me, registered people are attending today's meeting in person? Also, how many online?" And I'll let Lisa have this one.
This is registered members, so not guests. We have 46 members online, and we've got about approximately just over 50 in the room.
Thanks. Thanks for the question, Martin. Any questions in the room? Okay, I will remind people, the last time we had a meeting live in this room, I received a question that I got in trouble for answering—I thought brilliantly, but I was told perhaps not, and it was to do with the food. And somebody was concerned that we didn't have enough or of a certain quality of food, and so if you're noticing, in outside there, there were several kinds of cookies, there were four different squares, and three platters of sandwiches. So I just want to say, that's us listening to the membership, because at the last meeting that was raised as an issue, and we've dealt with it. Thank you. I think there's another online question. Oh, excuse me, one more? Okay, well, I think I better read this one out, because I just—she's been listening to me live. This is from Kitty Shun Kei Leung. "Mr. Armstrong, please consider giving members choices to select what they feel comfortable about cookies. For example, now, just provide a button called 'OK, Got It' is not enough." I have a feeling that's not about the cookies we're serving out here. I think that she's on to a website question, and so I have several of our technology team are in the room, I'm making eye contact with a couple of them right now, and it's an interesting suggestion to—I'm going to interpret this as suggesting that we have maybe better explained or more diverse options for people when we ask them, "Do you want to accept cookies, don't accept cookies, manage cookies?" I've noticed on all the websites I go to, there is multiple variations of that, so I'll ask our team to think about that. I appreciate the comment from a member. Thank you, Kitty.
Yeah, that's good input.
Lois says she doesn't like cookies. She says you can reject all cookies, you can reject all. There you go. Once again, the cookie question is the most interesting, that's fascinating, there you go.
No, but that is a great question, I really appreciate those. The more we get, the more we put in the prioritization bucket to improve, hopefully, the experience, so I don't like clicking through too many clicks either, so.
Other questions, online or in the room? You know, I think what happened is I described the cookies and sandwiches, and now everybody's just like, "Stop this thing, get me out there so I can eat the..." Okay, I'm not seeing any, and it's been a while since a new one came in. So I think with that, I will take the opportunity to, again, thank all of you for joining us at our 2024 Annual General and Special Meeting. If you do have a question that we didn't answer today, or you didn't choose to, or maybe it was personal, I invite you to either speak with any of us that are wearing the name tags, executives or directors that are here today, or you can send your question into the Office of the Assistant Corporate Secretary, which I—yep, it's on the screen right now, and we'll get back to you directly in the next couple of days. As always, appreciate the questions. Candid feedback is always very helpful. As Calvin says, we don't get nearly as much as we would like, and so it's great to get it. And your participation in this meeting and the open forum is greatly appreciated. I look forward to connecting with all of you again next year, if not sooner. Thank you all very much for coming, online or in person.